Okay, let's call this meeting to order. If you would, Madam Clerk, take roll call.
Certainly. Mr. Braun.
Present.
Ms. Pastnup, present.
Ms. Reclu.
Present.
Ms. Sebacher.
Here.
Mr. Schibberdicker.
Here.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Mr. Stone.
Present.
Mr. Washington.
Here.
Eight council members present.
Very good. If you'd join me as Pastor Williamson leads us in invocation.
Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, we rejoice tonight to give you thanks for the blessings of this day, and as we gather here in your chamber, we thank the Lord for all those who continue to faithfully serve our city. I pray for them regularly because they too are on the ground, meeting the public, and serving all of us, and facing the unknowns, especially during this pandemic. I pray for the continual perpetual safety of all the men and women who wear the uniform of this city, that work in this house and are on our streets every day, making the quality of life that we all cherish possible. I take a moment tonight to remember our neighbors in Birmingham, state of Alabama. Deadly tornado last evening, Lord, took human life and many injured. Destruction is far and wide. I pray, Lord, for recovery efforts that will take months, if not years. And in the northern part, our neighbors in Nebraska and Iowa, moving east, are in a blizzard, Lord, and again, I pray for MODAD and highway workers and all those who have to meet the emergencies that go with storms of this magnitude. I just ask you to bless and protect them as they do the difficult work of winter weather. We thank you, Lord, for the work that will be done in this chamber tonight, and as we pray, we pray for our extended city family. There are so many within the ranks of the city or connected to the city employees and servants. I just ask you to bless and touch as only you know to do, and we'll give you the praise and the glory for what you've done or doing and will continue to do on behalf of our public servants. I pray for this session tonight and ask you to guide the discussions, bless any decisions that are made that first you approve and that they are done to advance this community. We thank you for your love and strength. Watch over us till we meet again in Christ, we pray. Amen. Place the flag. Attention, salute and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Okay, at this time, we have comments from visitors. If anyone wishes to speak to the council, just step to the podium, give us your name and address, and limit your comments to five minutes or less. Had seen no one here this evening, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Tonight, we have on the agenda the approval of the city council meeting minutes of December 15th, January 12th, and the DOA report for December.
I make a motion, we approve the, all three items under the consent agenda for tonight.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing that, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. Can't lick my fingers to get these papers apart.
Kathy.
Okay, at this time, we will ask Ms. Holzschlag to run us through the financial report for December, please. There she is.
Okay. I start off by telling you that the sales tax for December was 2.8% ahead of last year. We still have one more month to record for 2020, so it'll probably be first part of next month before we get that. And I did draw your attention to the fact that there were three payrolls in December. All the expenses are proportionally higher. I tried to note everything in the notes to the statement. We did in December receive $183,000 in CARES Act money. $150,000 is for radios for the police station. And the other remaining 33 was for COVID-related expenses. Bought hand sanitizers and et cetera, et cetera. We received our annual rents in December. I think it was $30,000 and some odd dollars for the airport and, I can't remember, 13 or so for, for the general fund. We have two months of use tax recorded so far, which is $26,500. So that projects out to $159,000 a year. And typically, when the sales tax or use tax starts, whenever it's one is new, those amounts will increase as more and more people and start reporting. So I think it'll be more than $160,000 by year end. And we did make the semi-annual payment for the Fulton Commons TIP. Was $146,000 in interest, and we paid $100,000 towards the principal. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Motion to approve the financial report.
I have a motion and a second. Any other questions for Kathy? Any discussion on this? Hearing that, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no? All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to unfinished business. At this time, we have on the agenda to talk about the rec center, the name discussion. Clay, oh, there you are.
Park Board met last Wednesday. We discussed the name of the facility, the logo of the facility, and we also talked about the, the fees and the operating hours. Park Board recommended to go with City of Fulton Legends Recplex. We added in the City of Fulton. It's your request. Darren Warner came up with some logos, the logos of your packet. We utilized the top logo as the primary logo, and we used, utilized some of the smaller ones from merchandising and things like that, or, or letterhead, stuff like that. So Park Board reviewed that. They recommended that we use this name and, and these logos and bring it back to the council for their approval. Yeah, the one with the roof is, is the, the main logo. That'd be kind of what we'd do with the main signage for the building. And, and the Park Board also talked a little bit, like if, if we're selling merchandise or we're distributing stuff to people that don't live in the community, that we also add Fulton, Missouri to it. So it kind of advertises Fulton, Missouri as well.
Do we remember, and Darren might be able to help us. Darren, when we were asked before, there was numbers, there was several different numbers. Do we know what the council came back with, what the numbers were on that? Because I don't remember which one I liked best at the time.
Yeah, basically, every, for the most part, I believe, everybody came up with, with the exact same one, the one that is, you know, that we have as the primary logo as well. And then there's another version, you know, basically as a secondary logo without them. We just hang on, like I said, how you plan on in using it and what were in the logo into items and stuff like that.
And after the, the last meeting, Darren did some, some modifications to it. It had more stripes and different color stripes and things like that, but that's kind of what we came up with.
Well, Clay, I like that too, so. Is there a, I make a motion that we accept the logo and then, and the name of the City of Fulton Legend Rex, Rex Flex.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor to adopt the logo as the first one that we're seeing here. Is that?
Well, it's all of them.
It would be the, the top one with the, the bottom four used sparingly for depending on if, if you're embroidering it, putting embroidery on a shirt or, or maybe you're putting it on a, I don't know, something smaller. Yeah.
Clay, is there a significance to the stylized E's in the smaller logos because it, it? I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not a fan.
And that's, we're, we're kind of looking about, going back just to a regular solid E with those because that, that was kind of the Park Board. The Park Board was kind of back and forth on it. They, some like it, some don't, so I.
Yeah, I think if we're going to adopt the top logo as the main logo, then the smaller logos just need to be a, a version of.
I think we can do that. We can do that pretty easy, and that's, and like I said, we're kind of still playing with those, and, and the, the main one you're going to see everywhere is this one with the roof and the one that says City of Fulton, and, and the variations would just be, like I said, for smaller stuff. But yeah, we can, we can fix that E because.
Yeah, because if, if there's not a significance to the, to the lines or to the, you know, if we were calling out the G because maybe it was the F in Fulton or something, you know?
Yeah.
But I, I'm.
I, I think we can do that if, if that's what the council likes.
And that's my, it's my personal preference is to not use the stylized versions.
And I like the roof. That's sort of the signature piece of the building, and sort of spotlighting that is a great thing, I think. All right, any other questions, discussion?
And just to clarify, Councilman Washington, that was to accept both the logo and the recommended name for the facility, correct?
With the changes from the lines to the E.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
All right. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no? Very good. Do we want to just go ahead and discuss the fee schedule? Do we need approval on that as well?
Yeah, we, the Park Board also reviewed the, the fee schedule, both, both for the daily usage, the monthly usage, annual fees, and also the rental rates for the various parts of the facility. And then they reviewed the hours of operation as well. We feel like this is a pretty good starting point for 2021. Hours of operation may vary a little bit as we get in the building and we see what times are, are the most busy or, or what the, the biggest demand is for different times. But I think that's, that's our starting point, if the council approves that, and we'll, we'll move forward with the marketing and the promotion of those, those rates as soon as you guys approve that.
The only question, the only question I have on that is, I like, I, I know you did your homework, and I know these are the prices and the best prices that we're going to do as a starting point. Would it be, also, when, if it needs a rate increase, is that something that has to come to the council? Is that?
Yes.
Has to come to the council for rate increase?
Yes.
Okay, and that was my question.
The only question I've been asked is any chance you'll have a morning or an evening walkers rate? They don't really want the rec center. They just want someplace to go and walk and then go to the concession stand and get a cup of coffee or a bottle of water and sit and visit for an hour, hour and a half.
Yeah, we, we've talked a little bit about that today, and we thought maybe the, the people that are going to take advantage of that are probably seniors that are up early, wanting to get some exercise before it gets too crowded. And the monthly rate for seniors, I think, is 16 a month. So we felt like that was a pretty.
It's a pretty, pretty reasonable start off the get-go.
50 cents a day, get a free cup of coffee and.
Oh, free coffee?
Why not? Why not? Free cup of coffee. Probably losing money on that.
So I got a question. Clay and his folks have gone through and come up with what they think is a reasonable starting point for rates for the rooms and for the people for attendance. The Park Boards looked at it. You're going to review this stuff constantly as you, as we go, I hate this term, but going forward. Why do we need to get involved? I mean, why do we have to go to the minutia of, of saying, yeah, these rates are okay? You're running the facility. Run the facility.
I think just for, just as a little oversight, and maybe, you know, if he wants to change the rate of one thing in the future, that'll just, we'll just make that one change. But since this is a full slate, this is the entire package. We just want to give, to give him and us some authorization to begin promoting and begin marketing. And nothing that you guys are approving tonight is going to be set in stone.
Yeah.
It'll be, as you mentioned, it'll be constantly evaluated, it'll be constantly looked at. You know, when it comes time for next budget, where we, we look at, I think, I think we're trying to set some of these rates at a point to make it attractive enough to get a lot of people in and to experience it. And once we figure out what the hours are going to have to be and what, what services are most desirable and what's, there will be probably some adjustments made, both, both some going up and some going down. But none, none of this is going to be set in stone. We're just looking for blanket authorization for a starting point.
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, those are reasonable numbers.
That's, that's all it is.
I just don't want us, the council to get involved with, when he changes the, the senior rate from $3 a day to $4 a day, that we've got to approve that. That, to me, is, is something that he's got to do to make the rec center viable.
That will be the comment of, of the city when we're one year in and we're increasing already. I feel fairly certain, oh, they're already trying to increase the rates.
He might have.
And I think, I think, I think that should be looked at prior.
But, but he might have to increase the rates on some things and decrease the rates on others. And, you know, do we need to get in and analyze every rate increase and decrease?
And just to kind of build off of what Bill had said too, the city council does approve all rates and fees and whatnot across the board, whether it's a business license fee, utility rate. So this is well within those functions of the city council to review and approve those rates.
Okay.
Valid, it might be like once a year meeting, at a, at a budget meeting or something like that, but yeah, you guys are going to, you guys are going to look at them and give a, give a blessing one way or the other.
Well, last year, we were doing that. We were going through every single solitary rate, and, and we stopped, I believe we stopped at the Parks and Rec.
Well, I don't, I don't think we got to us because I think the COVID.
We stopped with the COVID.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's still, that's still out there. It needs to be continued to be reviewed as well.
I think you have a valid point though, Ballard. We don't need to bring every little nitpick and find to change back to the council. I don't believe we will be doing that.
Motion to approve the rec center fees.
Second.
I, I do have another question.
I have some questions as well.
I see rates in here for, you know, family, couple, youth, senior, but youth is 10 to 17. What if somebody younger than 10 wants to come and use the batting cage, wants to use, and obviously with parent or guardian, but is there a charge for younger than 10?
Probably not, because we're going to require that that person be supervised by a paying adult.
Okay.
I think, I believe our pool policy is you have to be at least 10 and accompanied by a 15-year-old. So we're going to try to stay consistent with those, so.
So if they're less than 10, they just have to come with a paying?
Yes, they'll be with a paying, paying customer.
Okay.
I, I have a question on, on facility rental rates. We have a block for four hours. We have half a day for seven hours and all day. Half a day, seven hours? That seems awful long in a block for four. I guess I, I guess I don't understand. A half a day to me is four hours.
Well, we're, we're not open eight hours a day. We're open 6:00 AM to 9:00 o'clock or whatever it is, so that's, they're just, they're hour time blocks, kind of similar. We, we looked at what other facilities were doing, and it seemed like that was popping up a lot. Everybody was selling these four-hour time blocks and these seven-hour time blocks. And I think seven hours kind of gives you some time in between. If you wanted to book back-to-back events, you just have, have some time in between to clean up or get ready for the second event. So that's.
It seems awful long to me is my, is where I'm, what my thought is, is seven hours for $200 for anything, and I think that's the highest rate on, with the exception of the banquet room.
Yeah, the banquet room.
The banquet room's $380 for seven hours. I think that's dirt cheap. I think we're giving it away, losing money.
I'd say those rental rates are very comparable to other recreation-type facilities across central Missouri and, and other places.
For seven hours? It seems just dirt cheap.
Yeah, it, it is. I mean, it's, some of them surprise me, and then some of them, I think, you know, some of them are really, really high. And, and I think what, we get through this first year, you're going to know if that's a good rate or not, because everybody's going to be jumping on it and using it and coming from other cities and doing it. And then, then you make that adjustment and move up, or you might not have anybody rent that part of the facility at all at that rate. And then you got to ask yourself, is it, is it too much?
Yeah, I mean, you certainly, I certainly think that it's supply and demand, and you have to look at that without a doubt, but I don't know, just in my mind, seven hours for a large activity room at 200 bucks, that's, it's under $30.
If you have a recommendation, we definitely will take a look at it. I, again, words with no history to go off of, we are kind of looking around to other buildings in this area, kind of seeing what they're doing and, and the rates they're charging and, and trying to get in that same ballpark.
It's a brand-new building, and it's a beautiful building and a wonderful facility, but I don't think it necessarily has to be the cheapest.
I think seniors are 60-plus.
60-plus?
Yeah.
So Clay, I will ask another question because it's been asked of me from our, from, from some people in our community. We have the Fulton Wrestling Club, and I know a few months ago that you sent out a response to an email that Bill sent out. Please help me understand that a whole lot more, and if you want to do that at another time, that's fine, but I, I've got to get to the bottom of that because the way I understand it, Clay, we're not receiving any dollars for the wrestling club to the City of Fulton.
No, that, that's incorrect. We, we receive money.
Mr. Johnson, please?
I'm, I'm interested to see what he has to say.
Yeah, again, I said I report. The, the Fulton Wrestling Club operates as a Parks and Rec program. We, we take a fee of $80 to $90. I think we backed it off this year because of COVID. We take a percentage of that fee to Parks and Rec, pays for T-shirts and awards, similar to what we do with baseball, soccer, flag football, things like that. They, the Fulton Wrestling Club operates their own checking account because they have to purchase, because they have to purchase things on a daily and a weekly basis, and the city does not have the ability to do that, that fast, to turn that over. Because they collect, every week they're collecting tournament fees, and then they're turning it around three days later and paying those tournament fees to the local tournament if they're going to Jeff City. So they, they do that, and again, we don't, they help, they do a fundraiser. They have their own tournament to help raise the, a lot of the money to cover some of the expenses. You know, they did a big, big fundraiser eight, 10 years ago. We bought $25,000 worth of mats through State Farm grant. So that's something that the city hasn't had to purchase for them. All of our, all of our coaches are volunteers. We don't pay any of the coaches. Some of our programs, we do pay the coaches.
Out of the $80, how much do we keep?
It's usually about 10 to 15 for a T-shirt and, you know, five or six per kid for the.
Are we keeping enough to cover those costs?
To, for the T-shirts and the awards. The big expense with the program is that every kid has to buy a USA wrestling card. And sometimes if they participate in tournaments at St. Louis, they have to buy an AAU wrestling card. They are, I think it's about 42, 43 bucks for the USA card, another 10 or 15 for the AAU card. So it's.
Who pays for that?
That, that's, that's the money that goes to the club, and they turn around and, and pay those to USA Wrestling or AAU Wrestling, depending on who's getting it. And then, like I said, that, that money pays for their card. They cannot participate in tournaments unless they have that card. All the coaches are required to be certified and go through background checks, and the coaches pay for those themselves, and that's about 70 to 80 bucks a person. We do provide a free T-shirt to the coaches. Again, that's similar to what we do with all our programs, so.
Reminds me of the, the traveling teams, the basketball teams, and how we have to cover expenses ourselves and stuff, but if we have a facility that we can participate, you know, that we would be a part of, that, and even though it may generate revenue for the, for the, for the City of Fulton, from each kid, and we ask them to, for each players and each team, have to come up with so much money to us to put on a tournament so you can pay for the officials, they pay for the officials to do that. And also what makes it, you have a program. We have a program for kids here in Fulton, and they don't have to go outside of, to go to Jeff City. We can help, we can host our own tournaments and things here, and that's the goal. And hopefully that we give our kids something to look for and go, something to look for to here in Fulton, having something here. I got so many kids, so many people saying, I can't wait for this place to be open. Yeah, so that's great.
I guess I have a real, I, and maybe, maybe I've gotten some, some not-so-accurate information, and, and I can live with that, okay? But for them to be operating their own checkbook, seems like that's a direct conflict and an issue for the City of Fulton, in my mind, without a doubt.
Again, it's, it's.
And I'm not, I'm not saying anybody's doing anything illegal.
And I will tell you, I will tell you this, so it's on record. I don't have, my name is nowhere near that account. I, I stay clear of that, so there isn't a conflict. But I, I tell you, we have to do it with the Fulton Flash Cross Country Team, again, because they have to turn around and write entry checks on a weekly basis. And we just, we can't turn checks over that fast. And then there's invoice issues and, and there's a lot of paperwork issues, so.
Would that, would that be, would that be correct, Bill? That we can't turn over and issue checks as they need it?
It depends on the, on the timeline.
It would, they, they can.
Two or three, two or three days can be tough.
And, and we're doing this every week for four months.
And like Clay said, Fulton Flash does this too. You know, you don't necessarily know who all's going to be participating weekly in the different, you know, meets, and so the parents will bring in the funds to the coaches, and then the coaches will then pay for those specific kids.
But we don't look at.
You don't know.
Yeah, we don't have a budget. We don't, we don't, is that account ever audited by anybody at the city, or do we, do we look at that account, or?
No.
We don't. It's, it's overseen by a, a volunteer board of people that oversee it in the, in the city.
I hate it. I hate the whole setup of it. I'll just, that's my personal opinion. I think it's wrong.
Well, I, I would, I would be open to any suggestions, short, short of eliminating the program.
I haven't tried to get him to go to City of Fulton Wrestling Club. Well, that didn't happen.
Well, we, I understand what you're saying. We don't, we don't call it City of Fulton, Fulton Flash. We don't call it City of Fulton, Fulton Fans. We, we just assume it's the Fulton Wrestling Club, it's the Fulton Fans, it's the Fulton Flash, and they're all.
I'm just making my point. It's, I mean, it, it is significantly more autonomous than the other City of Fulton programs.
I mean, we don't have a traveling baseball team that we run through the city.
You don't.
Or a traveling softball team.
The reason you don't is because you have enough kids participating to create a league of your own with.
And we all know, we all know that that is much more than $80 or $90 per kid for a traveling softball team or a baseball team.
And it's, it's, and these kids, when they sign up for these tournaments, it's $20 to $30 to participate in a tournament, so that money doesn't go through the city. It, it's paid to the Fulton Wrestling Club. The Wrestling Club turns around and pays those entry fees directly to the tournament. And again, that's, it's, it's the same way the Fulton Flash operates.
I, I guess my question would be legalities. How are we doing that if? I, I guess my question would be legalities. How are we doing that if on, on, and we're paying bills, obviously, at times? We're paying stuff for the organization, but potentially not receiving funds to support that.
Well, I, I think one thing's.
And we're not touching the money.
One thing that's gonna help us is, I think, by hosting the kids tournament, we're gonna be able to host it in that building. And we're gonna take a considerable amount of the.
So if, if it's eighty dollars to be in the wrestling club and we hold back enough for a T-shirt and a ca, what was it? A T-shirt and what?
Uh, awards like.
And awards?
Yeah.
Is the rec center getting any money for Fulton Wrestling Club? Is it, is it, is it gonna be a revenue producer for the?
It will operate as a pro, Parks and Rec program within the building, similar to if we have a volleyball league, if we have a Zumba class. It, it will get that. What I anticipate the increase of revenue being is that we will now host the youth tournament. And we'll take a majority of that revenue.
And the Fulton Club taking the rest of it.
Well, then the expectation will be that we cover some of the expenses.
But that money currently is just going straight to, when we hosted at the high school, that money is going straight to and directly to.
That is correct.
The separate checking account.
That is correct.
The city of Fulton sees zero of it.
That's correct. And they pay all the expenses of the tournament. They pay for the referees, the school rental, awards, things like that. That all.
Comes from, from here.
Yeah, comes out of the, the revenue that's generated for that tournament is used to cover the expenses for that tournament.
Is that a 501(c)(3)?
I, I don't know if they're officially one. I don't, I don't know. I don't know.
That'd be nice to know and also be nice to know if we could scrutinize that, uh, budget at some point.
And, and if the council wishes, we can take over all, 100% of the expenses and the revenue.
No, I don't think.
We do have to find a way to make that happen in a speedy fashion.
I, I just, I, I just am concerned on, from an audit perspective, when we do an audit, how we can be charging one amount and not receiving all those dollars to show, and we're, we're splitting it before it ever gets to the city of Fulton. And, and I'm not sure how that can be even close to right from an audit perspective. And maybe Kathy could help us answer that.
Yeah, if there's, if there's a better way to, to run that program, Fulton Flash, Fulton Fins.
And, and I guess I never, I've never heard anything different about Fulton. I'd never knew that about Fulton Flash or, or Swim Fins or Fulton Fins. But that's.
Clay, I think we're, we're just wanting more information. I don't think anybody's up here wanting to redesign the program or, or tell you to, to run it differently. I think it's an understanding of, of the money flow. You know, what is it that Parks and Rec is providing as the oversight of the program? And then what are we being reimbursed for through the program? And then what monies, you know, is, is it no different than if Lindsay and my kids were doing the cross country? And she said, hey, if you give me your 20 bucks, I'll pay for both kids. I'll, I'll just run my credit card through and I'll pay for both kids for this weekend. You know, i- is that what that, that, that swing account is? It's just the parents all getting together saying, this is how we're gonna.
It's run by volunteers, yes. Yes, that, that part is run by volunteers.
Then it's understood, I think it's just gaining an understanding of what is truly the Parks and Rec program. What's the monies involved in the Parks and Rec program and what's the monies involved in, in what is not considered part of the Parks and Rec program.
Yeah, we can provide that. Yeah. I mean, again, the, the program will be able to operate out of a building, a building that doesn't leak, doesn't have huge utility bills. Um, so that, there's gonna be considerable less expense for the city.
But they weren't, according to your notes that you sent us, they weren't, it wasn't like the wrestling club was paying for any of that stuff anyway.
And, and, and our baseball teams don't pay for utilities, lights. They don't, and the, and the Fulton Fins don't play.
But they play two days a week and they practice one or two days.
Yeah, yeah. And then the Fulton Fins don't pay for chlorine at the pool and it's, so it's.
Yeah.
And, and the baseball teams don't control their own checkbook.
Because they don't have any, they, they don't, we cover all the expenses because everything is locally.
Okay, I, I, and I'm, and I'm just saying, Clay, that I wonder on, from an audit perspective, how we could collect eighty dollars and not see if we have ten kids get dropped into the program, that eight hundred dollars doesn't hit somewhere in the city of Fulton. Only three hundred dollars hits there and 500 goes to another organization. In my mind, that is an audit issue.
Yeah. And we can, we can take on 100% of the expenses and, and 100% of the revenue if that's, but it's, again, it's gotta happen in a, in a timely fashion. So that's, we're, we're willing to do that. It's probably that is the biggest holdup, is being able to turn the money over quickly. Um, if, I would prefer for it all to go through the city.
Bill, is that, is that, is that a concern?
I've invited Kathy in and she's not coming through the door, so.
I, I mean, I just.
Kathy.
Or am I totally crazy for thinking that that is an issue?
Maybe this can just be a subject for our next working meeting.
Yeah, we can talk about it. Yeah, we can.
You can show us some financials. You can show us, you know, some cash flows and show us where the money's going and.
We're about, we're about a month from wrapping up the season, I think. So it's.
I, I, I sent you the text. It said, come, come on in.
The Fulton Wrestling Club is an entirely separate entity. We don't have any entries on our books for monies coming from the Fulton Wrestling Club. So from an audit perspective, they do not qualify as a discreet component. So there's no reason an audit would look at Calaway County when they're doing the city of Fulton's audit.
So we do not then, then none of the fees that, that are received go into the city in any?
No, that, there are some and they're, they're coded under a youth activity fees. There, there is that percentage that we talked about.
So there's no way that anybody would even be able to identify that was coming from the Fulton Wrestling Club.
And, and maybe one method that Kathy might, would be to give it all to the wrestling club and then have the wrestling club turn and write us, we invoice the wrestling club for our expenses.
We do it. We use two check runs a minimum. If the requisition is in the system, we can turn it around in two days. Yeah, I mean, that's never been a problem. So I don't wanna get in the middle of this.
I, I, I think the, the policy, standard policy that we're always told is seven to 10 days.
I, I don't know what the right answer is, but I'm hearing from you that the money is going to the city. The director of finance says. Not really. I'm not seeing it.
Clay.
Yes.
What, what do the wrestlers pay to join the wrestling club?
Uh, I believe it was eighty this year.
Where does that eighty dollars go? Does it go to the wrestling club or does it go to the city?
Part of it goes to the city and part of it goes to the wrestling club.
But they, but they, they sign up here though, right?
Yes, they sign up here. And I can, I can go back and pull the records on, on what we paid, what the city kept and then what was turned over to the.
Okay, but then, but then stuff like getting the singlets and shoes, that's all the wrestlers' responsibility?
Those expenses are paid. Yeah. The, the wrestling club pays for the expense of the uniforms. We, we pay for the, the T-shirt.
Right.
T-shirt and then.
So the wrestling club buys the singlet and the, the wrestling shoes?
Shoes are, shoes are on their own.
Okay.
Yeah, the singlet is provided.
Okay. And then by the club?
Yes.
Right.
That's a, that's a uniform that they check out.
And then that money's put into youth accounts with the other sports.
So that, that's part of the, excuse me.
No, I'm sorry.
That's, that's part of the eighty dollars that gets funneled, part of that eighty dollars gets funneled back to the wrestling club. And with that money, they buy the singlets for the uniform. Well, that's what the.
Well, and they, they don't do that every year. A lot of that money is done through fundraisers. They, they'll have the tournament. That's a major fundraiser. They'll, sometimes they'll have a spaghetti dinner for a fundraiser. They don't buy uniforms every year.
Right.
So they, they check out the uniforms. Um.
But then the.
The, the major part of their expense is the USA and the AAU memberships.
Yeah.
That, that eats up the biggest part.
And they handle that versus the wrestler?
Well, I'm sorry, what was that?
The, the club pays for that?
We, we do. Well, it's paid for because it, it's a very, it's a very complicated registration process that we do not feel that most parents would be able to do. So we, we buy that. In fact, I do it through the club's credit card. We pay it online. That's the only way to do it.
Okay.
You can't write them a check. It has to be paid credit, by credit card. And then each kid has a membership number.
Right.
And then they're able to participate in the tournaments. And then there's some liability assurance associated with that too and.
And then the, like the tournaments, the kid will pay the club the tournament fee and then the club will turn around and pay for the entire team.
For example, let's say it's twenty dollars to enter. We have thirty-five kids sign up to go to Hawaii's. Um, they usually pay on Tuesday or Monday or Tuesday. Um, they'll send in the entries and then they'll have to pay. Usually, usually they like, they like it mailed in early, but sometimes you can bring it the Saturday of. So it's, it's a very, very quick turnaround and it goes on for four, four or five months every week.
Clay, I think one of your statements just exemplified our confusion over it. You know, you made a comment of, we pay, I pay, I use the club's credit card.
Yeah.
And, and that's getting some very blurred, well, okay, who's the we?
I'm not, my name's not on that credit card. My name's not on those counts, but it's, it's easier for me because again, it's a complicated online registration process.
And I respect that.
So that's, that's why I handle it.
You paying for things with the club. So are, are you paying for it as a member of the club? Are you paying for it as a director of Parks and Rec?
As, as an administrator assisting with the.
I, I think this is where all of the, the fuzziness and the confusion is coming in. And maybe if we just had a work session where maybe you laid out some of those examples of, of a typical season, typical year, how the money comes and goes, who's responsible for what, I think would help us a lot.
Okay, we can do that.
I would like a work session for sure. I have one last question. Clay, if I come in and sign up for Fins or Fulton Flash or wrestling, do I make the checkout to the city of Fulton?
You do, you do. And, and, and the reason we do that is because the city covers all those expenses. We turn around and we pay, and, and those two, the Flash and the Fins, we pay those coaches. Okay, and Flash, not so much. I don't wanna get into a bunch of numbers right now, but the Flash, not so much. The Fins coach gets a considerable payment. Two, one or two assistant coaches get a considerable payment. And a lot of that is because that's the way it's always been for thirty-plus years. And part of the, the difference between the Fins and the other two is that the Fins' practice happens during the day. So you almost have to pay somebody to get them to utilize.
Oh, I'm not even looking. I, I mean, that's not the, the concern.
And those expenses are paid by the city.
So then, so then I write the checkout to the city of Fulton and you're taking that check and giving it to?
Who's the check made out to?
They're made out to Fulton Wrestling Club.
So, so they, they, they write the check in this building, but you just give all the checks to the wrestling club?
The wrestling club. And it.
Oh, so it goes to the wrestling club? It doesn't come to the city of Fulton?
Well, here's what, here's what will always happen. There, there'll be, uh, a considerable amount of checks made out to Fulton Parks and Rec. And those are divided out and, and deposited. And that's our, that becomes the city's share. So ones made out to Parks and Rec are deposited into the city account. If there's a difference, then the wrestling club pays, but it's usually, there's enough people that it covers the percentage. So, and, and I can bring you the number for this year of what went into the city account and what. And you also gotta consider that there's some variation in that, slight variation, because you have, um, occasionally a few scholarship participants and, and city usually covers that, that little ten, fifteen, twenty dollar break.
Clay, I like to, I like the idea of having, providing activities for our youth in our community is very important, but also it's awesome to have a facility that you can go to and, uh, and, and have, that you can offer these activities for that kid in our community because the kids are the number one that benefit from it. Not only that, but also our high school will for those kids to, uh, decide to continue to, uh, participate and continue. And we have a good morale feeling about what our high school is doing. And especially since the, uh, mission have opened it up for the, for the women to be a part of the wrestling club too as well. Family wrestling teams too, so.
And, and then one option we might have, and it's, it's a little bit challenging, is just to, to, to let it operate as an organization by its own and, and rent the rec center to them for practices and, um, tournaments, meets. The, the challenge you have with that, and you have this with all, all organizations, is that the parents are volunteers. They, you roll through every two or three or four years, different ones are coming in. Um, when we run those programs under Parks and Recreation, um, there's better organization. Um, we can promote it better and, uh, I think feel, people feel better about signing up for it.
But we're, there again, we have that expense. The city has that expense. I, and I don't disagree with you, Mr. Washington, at all. That our kids need programs, but I think there's gotta be some better checks and balances and certainly some looking into what's going on with this program.
Work session next, in two weeks?
Yep.
Yeah, we can do that.
So let's, let's do this. Let's have a work session in two weeks. Um, that'll give you time to kinda pin down where you're at and maybe have Kathy work on possibly where she feels we would rather be or, or if she's on board with this program the way it is, let's hear that. But, uh, let's give this a couple of weeks. We'll get a work, a work session going on this.
That'd be perfect.
Does that work?
That's perfect.
Excellent. Thank you. So the motion on the floor is to accept the rates. Is there any more discussion on that part of it?
I have some discussion on that.
Yes, ma'am.
I, with regards to the banquet room, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit with these fees. I'm curious if there's deposits that are gonna be required?
Um, there may be. Again, the whole policy and procedures for that specific part of the building are, are being developed quickly.
Sure. I, I do think, I agree with, with Councilman Braun that the 380 for the half day is really, really low. And I'd, I'd also like to, to entertain some ideas with regards to renting the banquet room with or without the kitchen. Some folks may wanna come in and just want the facility. They won't have a need to use the kitchen. Um, if perhaps we could split that up some way so that if they just wanted the space and weren't having food, that could be a different rate. Um, and then we could, if we did something like that, we could incorporate those deposits so that in the event that we find out later that they did in fact use the kitchen, we keep those deposits or keep that for damages or cleanup or things of that nature. So it, it seems pretty generic to me. I don't know if that's the right word, to just have the hourly rate, the seven hours and then the all day. But it's the same no matter what. Cause I think people might have an interest in renting, have, have different desires for that space.
And that was, is, does that include tables and chairs? Or is there, is there gonna be a separate rent for tables and chairs?
I, I think we would include that in. I, I think.
Well, there was a, there was a, some line, a note on one of the pages that tables and chairs rental is in addition.
Well, it depends on what area. So again, I think if you're getting a banquet room, you think you're getting, you're getting it all. You're, you're getting it all.
Okay.
Um, and again, we are, we're ironing out all those policies and procedures as fast as we can here. Cause it's, but we've been working on it for six months, but, uh.
Well, and I, I guess that the goal, bringing this to us tonight was for our approval. And if we're still ironing things out, I'm not comfortable approving that just.
Well, I, I think we need a number. I think we need a number. Um, we typically charge deposits on the scout cabin. Um, down here at, uh, Memorial, but sometimes we'll take a deposit if they, they take the concession stand. Um.
And then going with that, with regards to a deposit, we would also need some sort of scale that would describe how much of the deposit we would keep in the event that XYZ happens. So we rent the banquet hall and we don't rent the kitchen, but later we find out they did rent the kitchen. Now we have to go and clean it. Um, but nothing was damaged. Maybe we don't keep the full deposit, but we keep a portion set aside for that cleaning.
And then we have that in place with the scout cabin. There's a checklist that we check the next day and, um, if they don't satisfy X number of requirements and they lose their deposit. It's usually a kind of a all or nothing deal.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to see that. I think myself before I would pass something like this. And, and again, I know that, that your goal is to expedite for marketing, but if, if we're ironing things out, let's bring that back to the council, um, before we approve what we.
I, I can, I can probably tell you it won't be the next council meeting because it's, we're, we're still trying to iron out the alcohol side of it. That's, that's a big key factor. Um, so we're, we're working on that. Um.
But, but then again, like I said earlier, in June, you could be saying. But then, again, like I said earlier, in June, you could be saying, "Oh, man, these numbers are all messed up. We need to change everything," because you're just learning.
True.
You've got to start somewhere.
Well, and I can tell you right now, that banquet room was at $900, and we got to looking around, and nobody was really that, other than the private. Private ones.
$3.80 is dirt cheap for a banquet room of that size with a kitchen for seven hours. I could do a wedding and reception in that timeframe, and that's dirt cheap, so I think that's low. And if we're looking to provide this service, but also we have city staff who has to go in, who has to clean that up, has to make sure that alarms are set and that things are well taken care of, that seems really low. And Ballard, to your point, with regards to sort of micromanaging the pay scale or the rental scale, I do think it's important that that comes to the council, because when the citizens are upset, they come to the council. So, we need to be involved in that before we can just give full control over, in my opinion.
Okay. And my thoughts, somewhat like your thinking, but Clay and his folks, they've gone to the other establishments, the other rec centers. They've looked at what other pricing structures are. We haven't done that.
I understand, but again, it's, and I'm not saying that what Clay has researched is incorrect or inappropriate. He's come to us for guidance. That's what I'm offering. It seems low, and it seems too vague to say, sure, $3.80 is good, because again, we don't know if we have deposit requirements. We don't know if we can rent just the banquet hall without the kitchen. There needs to be, I think, some more fine tuning with those spaces.
Well, I think if, these are the rates where the department's recommending, that the park board's recommending. If, we've done the research, we've looked at it, and we've, you know, that's compared to what Columbia and Jeff City's doing. If the council thinks it need better, I think I need, I just need a number. I could pick an any number. I could go up $100, I could go up $200. If you think it's too low, I just need some guidance on that also, because we feel like this is our recommendation.
Clay, at our work session, and you had it to last, you've had it, I've seen it, where you've had the numbers from other locations for other areas within our radius. And maybe even if you could send that back out to us again. I'm sure I still have it in an email somewhere, but it may be much easier if I could get that out.
Well, and I would just add, what you're saying is that we did those numbers back in the summer. We got to looking around, just checking on a few of those facilities, and some of those rates have gone up here at the beginning of the year. So, and we've made a few adjustments based on that, but yeah, I'd be happy to send that back out to you.
Or get it to Courtney, you know, as soon as we have her.
On the other hand, I don't have any problem with the rates as it is right now. And with the deposit, I think with some leadway, he can go ahead and add that. It don't have to be on here, but when they sign up for it, we were asking for a deposit of, and you will get that back if the facilities is cleaned up and things like that. That's what a lot of times a deposit are.
That can be a hundred bucks a dollar.
When you say, hey, there's a deposit on it, you need to leave a deposit for our cleaning, whatever situation is. And then that way, if everything goes good, you get your deposit back. But, because we're just going to push this, we need to get this out so we can get people interested in renting.
Clay, please keep in mind when you're writing up the policy, glitter. Make sure glitter is written in there, that it's not to be used.
Glitter and tape on the walls. Tape on the walls is another one. Yes.
I might interject really quickly that you guys could very well, it doesn't sound like there were a lot of questions or concerns about the membership rates. You very well could approve a portion of this and come back when Clay's had a little more time to do something about the facility rental rates, which seems to be a little bit more of a concern, if Clay's needing some sort of answer tonight, but also needs more time to get you the information that you're needing. So, it doesn't have to be an all or nothing, or it could very well still be an all or nothing, but we do need to handle the motion that's on the floor.
Clay, I see, we offer employees membership packages for businesses. How do employees of the City of Fulton are not being contacted?
That's an idea that we're floating around. It hasn't, nothing's been talked about real serious. I think typically what we give across all facilities and programs is a 20% discount to city employees. So, we can continue with that. We can look at maybe developing some type of wellness program or something like that. Again, I think that's an internal discussion we need to have to see if that's something we even want to do.
Seems like to me you've got a great starting point. It may not be perfect. Is it possible to cap this at 90 days and, over the first 30 days, sort of aggressively look at changes that might need to be made at the 90-day mark and not book those dates until we have some more idea of where we're lacking bookings?
Yeah, but we could do whatever. If you want to wait till we bring back policies and procedures, we can do that.
Let's just do that.
The big thing we're getting is a lot of people want to rent it for weddings and receptions and things like that, and they're wanting to know a number. So, and they're also wanting to see it.
So, you could do a pre-sale. You could do a pre-sale offer. This is our pre-sale rates and prices.
And then affect...
If you book today and pay today, then you're good, you're locked in. Rates could change after that.
It looks like we're not offering the four-hour block for the banquet room, and just theoretically, if we did, based on the hourly rate, that'd be $300. But then you go right next to that, and an additional three hours is only going to run you an additional 80 bucks. So, I feel like if you're looking for a number, we should be somewhere in the $500 range for the half-day. You know, something along those lines, especially if there's already a lot of interest. I still think that's dirt cheap for that type of room, that size of room. It's brand spanking new. You know, and then maybe we look at the all-day rate being a little bit more as well, but it's just comparatively speaking, based on the hour versus the seven hours, I'm still struggling with that one.
And I think a lot of places will charge you for tables and chairs, don't they?
I know I paid an awful lot for the last banquet room that I had. An awful lot.
Me, too.
Okay. We'll see you in two weeks.
All right. We have a motion on the floor still.
Motion to table the motion on the recreation center fees.
Second.
So, a motion in a second on the floor to table this topic. What's that going to do to you, Clay?
We just, we just start promoting it. We'll just hold off on the advertising and promotion of it at this point.
And you won't be able to book anything, obviously, now until at least two more weeks.
Is the council going to want this to go back to the park board again?
I'm not talking for the council, but I think the park board has already made their recommendation. The city council wants to modify it, so I would say it does not need to go back to the Park and Rec Board. Any modifications or changes now would be made at the discretion of the city council.
Are we going to move forward with what Courtney recommended with regards to the membership rates and at least approve those so we can start promoting that and just talk about the facility rental side, or have we tabled everything at this point?
Tabled everything.
I think we tabled everything.
Okay. I got a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Do we, do we know exactly what we need Clay to bring us back for us to be able to make a decision on the facility fees and for the membership rates? Are we asking for deposit rates? Are we asking for the details? Are we asking him to already have policies and procedures written up? What exactly are we asking Clay to bring back to us that will allow us to make a decision?
I, myself, would like to see more detail on the facility rental rates. So, you know, like I mentioned, if we split the banquet room with or without the kitchen, a potential rate change on the half-day and deposit rates, what those might look like.
And I know I would like to see the comparisons of other like or similar facilities where they're at rate-wise.
But I believe that we need to separate it, if you want to go that way, that we need to go ahead and approve the fee for the...
The membership fee.
Membership, so we can get something going. That don't seem to be a problem there. It seems to be on the facility rates.
No, we do have security cameras within the banquet area. They're going to, how the banquet operates, if it's an after-hours type deal, they'd have a swipe card, they'd be able to get in once their event's over. They'd set the alarm. If they didn't set the alarm, then the alarm would set at a certain point in the evening.
So, if they just center and then party over all the 24/7?
We're looking at the 24/7 option, again, utilizing the pass card and that, so they can get access to it.
Courtney, do we need to, if we're going to vote separate on this, or do we need, we got to table it? Do we got to finish up on the table?
So, the motion that we have on the floor right now is to table everything, which will then go on the next council meeting agenda. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I got you. I just didn't know, do we need to cancel this out to, if we want to go back and vote on the membership rate?
So, to do what you're saying, Bob, we could do that. We would have to get a vote to not table this.
That's what, that was what I was asking, that we need to do that.
And then go ahead and make an amendment to the original. Is that right, Courtney?
If, I would say if we're going to go down that path, if we would just like to withdraw the motion to table it, and if not, then we can go down that crazy pathway if you'd like to. But otherwise, if your intention is to go ahead and approve the membership rates, the easiest path to doing that would be for Mr. Schibberdecker and Mr. Braun to withdraw their motion.
So, moved.
Second. Removed.
All right.
I make a motion, I make a motion that we accept the membership.
The original motion is still in, still there.
Okay. I didn't know if that was canceled out with that table.
So, the original motion is to approve all of the membership rates and facility rental fees as they've been presented.
I'd like to amend that original motion.
Thank you.
To just include the fees, nothing to do with the banquet room.
Okay. So, just the membership fees.
Membership fees.
Thank you very much.
Membership fees only.
All right. So, when we vote on this, we will be voting on the membership fees only.
We're going to vote on the amendment, right?
I second if you don't have a second yet.
I do. I got one. And yes, Mr. Johnson, we are voting on this amendment first on that motion.
Okay. Is that cleared, everyone?
It's mud.
It's a little confusing, but the point is we're going to at least put to rest the membership fees. Any discussion?
How about the hours? Are the hours, are the hours approved and all that, or not?
Let's leave the hours to his discretion.
Hours, yeah. Hours are subject to change. It says on the thing. I'm fine with that. All right. So, right now, we are voting on the amendment to the original motion. That is all. So, let's vote on that amendment.
Which is membership fees only.
Taking this motion to membership fees only. That is what you are voting on. Correct.
All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no.
Wonderful. Now, approving membership fees only. That is what you're voting on.
Is there a motion?
Okay.
Yes.
Motion in a second is on the floor.
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no.
Thank you.
Well, we got some.
Thank you, Clay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clay.
Okay. We do not have new business tonight.
I got some.
Go ahead.
I got two things. I just kind of want to, I spent some time today talking to the county commissioners. They are going to be doing the first round of vaccinations for some of the city employees, police, fire, and utility workers, beginning on Monday. Callaway got in 500 doses. Based on the people that are pre-signed up, they have just about all those doses spoken for. They are trying to make arrangements to get additional doses to keep doing vaccinations. Also, in those conversations, I talked about, we discussed with the county, the discrepancy between what Callaway County posts on their COVID, Callaway COVID site, and what other organizations are placing on their COVID site. I mean, this morning when I came to work, the Callaway site said that there were 360 active cases in the county. I went to one, two, three, four, five, I went to six different sites on the internet, ranging from Johns Hopkins to the State of Missouri official site, New York Times, Mayo Clinic. And what I was finding at those sites was anywhere from, that the county would have between 90 and 103 active cases, if you count back everybody that's tested positive in the last 10 days. So, I was inquiring as to why is there a discrepancy between what I'm seeing in all these other sites and what I'm seeing at the Callaway site? And what I was able to find out, and it's really, it's a great answer. Callaway County is keeping you on the list and keeping you active going back 21 days, which is the CDC maximum safety, security, what's she say? Guidance for maximum length of time someone could be contagious. They're going, so they're keeping someone on the list 21 days, and these, all these other places that I was looking at were keeping on the list 10 days. So, naturally, and if you look, so kind of if you do some of the math, most of these other places is, they're showing us having a nine to 10-day new cases per day, nine to 10 new cases per day. And if you go back the 21 days instead of the 10 and do the, oh, and then they took 96 cases off of their positive list, active list. So, today, they dropped their active list from 360 down to 264. So, if you take that 264, divide that by 21, you know, you're just a little over 12, 12, less than 13 per day. So, I mean, the numbers are generically now very close and make sense to me, but it took me, how long have we been doing this reporting? It took until today to find out that they're keeping someone on the list 21 days instead of the 10 that almost everybody else has. So, are there any questions on that?
But then, some people are sick longer than 21 days, right?
It's not, it's not, we're not going there.
Just because you're sick doesn't mean you're contagious.
You're supposed to self-report and stay on.
And just because you're ill does not mean you're contagious.
Okay.
You can be contagious for weeks, or not, my apologies. You can be ill for weeks, but there's still only a certain amount of time where you're actually contagious to give it to somebody else.
You'll test positive for months.
Okay.
Next thing, I think, you know, we've closed down, locked the doors of City Hall recently because of the number of COVID cases that we had in the building. I think the last actual COVID case that the City of Fulton employee experienced that we reported out, I think was on January 8th. So, that's been quite a while ago. We're going to unlock the doors to City Hall tomorrow and open up and let people start coming in again and let people start going out and get back to doing what we're supposed to do.
Okay.
All righty? Thank you for that.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on to council concerns. I'll start to my lower right, Councilman Washington.
I have nothing.
All right. Councilwoman Pastnauk.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Councilman Stone?
Not a concern, just something to share. Yesterday, or Monday, was my father's 23rd anniversary of a heart transplant. He was with us nine years after that heart transplant, and so just a call-out that if anybody is interested in being an organ donor, please make sure that your wishes are known to your family and your friends and everybody around you. You can make that notification also on your driver's license, but your family does have final say at end of life of whether or not they want to abide by those wishes. So, please make sure that your family members are aware of what your wishes are. Heaven doesn't need your organs. We need them down here. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Reclu? And Councilman Simmons?
All items.
Councilwoman Sebacher?
Just one thing. Have we made any advancements towards the personnel board?
The, the personnel review?
Yes.
Um, Michelle is making some contact and putting together some salaries from other communities, and we will be getting that out, I don't know, probably still another 30 days or, or better. We'll have, we'll be getting some information out to you.
Mr. Johnson, can you clarify, meaning you're going to provide us with information or that's when we'll start participating in the conversations?
Probably provide you with the information.
My understanding is I thought we were going to be, it was going to be a participatory process, not just an information sharing.
Oh, at that point, we got to get the information, then we'll, I guess that we'll get the information, then we'll figure out what we're going to do with it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, very good. Moving on, Councilman Braun?
Nothing tonight, thank you, sir.
And Councilman Shiverdecker?
Just one thing, I, I know it's January, but 4th of July will be here before we know it. We need to go back to the fireworks and start discussing it again.
Mr. Mayor, I, I want to congratulate Valerie for her Fulton Housing Authority Director.
Oh, thank you.
Here, here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Before we move on to add to Councilman Shiverdecker, can we also look at scheduling when we're going to meet with the chamber this year as well?
We do have that clarified in the contract, but I will review that and let you guys know when we've established that.
Awesome.
Resolutions. Councilman Simmons, if you would, present Resolution 3382.
Just to clarify, it is actually 3392. If you look at the resolution, it is correct. The agenda is incorrect.
Gotcha. Resolution number 3392. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to enter into a lease agreement with D&amp;M Farms LLC of Hallsville, Missouri, for lease of agricultural land surrounding Elton, Henley, Memorial Airport for a cost of $191 per acre. I make a motion that we approve Resolution number 3392 at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there anything that you'd like to call attention to on this, Mr. Johnson?
Um, we, we did, we, I'm unfamiliar with the gentleman. We did background checks, we checked the letting institutions, respective farmer that is going to hopefully do us a great job. We have, we have the last tenant for a number of years, and they did a great job for us, but they wanted to get out of it for personal reasons, and we got this, this one.
All right, it sounds like a good contract for the city, good use of the citizens' money. Are there any questions, any more discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. All right, Resolution number 3393, maybe?
3392 is current, yes. And now we'll move on to 3393.
Yeah, if you would, Councilwoman Reclu?
Yes. Resolution number 3393. Resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to enter into a lease agreement with D&amp;M Farms LLC of Hallsville, Missouri, for lease of agriculture land formerly known as the Javro Farm for a cost of $191 per acre. I make a motion, Resolution passed, Resolution 3392 received.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. That will pass. And moving on to ordinances, Councilman Stone, if you would, present Bill number 1605.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 1605, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to approve Platte 5 for Willow Creek subdivision. I make a motion to pass Bill number 1605 on to second reading at our next scheduled council meeting.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on this Platte approval? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. That will move on for second reading. Councilman Braun, if you would, present Bill number 1602 for second reading.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to do second and third reading this evening, please.
Absolutely.
Bill number 1602, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to execute an agreement with the county of Callaway, Missouri, allowing the continued collections of household hazardous waste and electronic waste for the county's residents, establishing a fee and establishing an effective table. I make a motion to put 1602 for third reading at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on this? We did talk about it last meeting. All right, hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. And if you would, again, please.
Bill number 1602, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to execute an agreement with the county of Callaway, Missouri, allowing the continued collection of household waste, hazardous waste, and electronic waste for county residents, establishing a fee and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to put 1602 for final passage at tonight's meeting.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second.
I do have one thing, Mr. Mayor, before we finish, in case there's anybody out there that wasn't aware, I, I'd like to thank the county because they did step up to the plate and are paying the city $10,000 a year for that service, so the county residents can enjoy that service as well. So there is a $10,000 payment we're getting reimbursed for.
Very well noted. And before we move on, I would just real quickly like to ask how we're doing with our tree and limb reclamation at the new site. Is that going okay?
From what I, from what I hear, it's going great.
Is it, okay?
I've, I've used it a couple of times, and I'm more than satisfied.
Good deal. And our other sites aren't being dumped on?
Not to my knowledge. I tried, but then I realized that dumped it.
Big sign, don't do this. Very good. All right, so I have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. If you would, Madam Clerk, take roll call for final passage.
All right, Ms. Pacey Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Ms. Seibacher?
Yes.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
Eight council members affirmative.
All right, Bill 1602 passes. Councilman Washington, at this time, would you please present Bill number 1604?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to do a second and third reading on tonight for 1604.
Great, thank you.
16, uh, Bill number 1604, an ordinance reclassifying under the zoning ordinance a tract of land known as 917 East Walnut Street in Fulton, Missouri, and establish an effective date.
Second.
I make a motion. I make a motion that we do a third and final reading on tonight, on Bill number 1604.
That's a five-yard penalty over here for, uh, illegal procedure. Yeah.
Yeah. Full start.
Full start, there we go, that's what I was looking for. All right, I have a motion in a, do we, we do have a second?
We are going to count that one, yes.
Yes.
After replay.
After replay, we'll, we'll let that one go. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. And if you would, again, sir.
Bill number 1604, an ordinance reclassifying under the zoning ordinance a tract of land known as 917, uh, 917 East Walnut Street in Fulton, Missouri, and establish an effective date. I make a motion that we do a final, uh, final vote on this tonight's meeting at the council.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. All right, you've heard the bill read three times. Madam Clerk, if you would, take roll call for final passage.
All right, Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Ms. Seibacher?
Yes.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
And Ms. Pacey Snook?
Yes.